We have two back to back.
Okay, welcome to the joint meeting of the JB Fletcher Library Board of Trustees and the Westford Permanent Town Building Committee. Please be aware, this meeting is being recorded. Anything said or entered into the chat becomes part of the permanent record. Buffy? Is someone, can someone do a call?
You're still muted Buffy.
Okay. I guess I hit stop video too. Okay, now we'll just see who's here. Claremont is here.
Yes.
Here Fleckner.
Here.
Roach. Not here. Secor. Not here. Teal.
Here.
Here. Cook.
Here.
Thank you. Hazelton.
Present.
Karpinski.
Here.
Mahana.
Here.
Sort of here. Roberts.
Here.
Zegowitz.
Here.
And Berlinsky. No, but Beth Perkins is here.
Yes, I am.
Okay. Leadberg.
Yeah.
Rainville.
Here.
Jeff Goodwin.
Here.
Oh, you are. Okay, thanks. Stu Thomas.
No, no longer.
Okay. Who did I miss?
Alicia.
Oh, Alicia, sorry. My print thing ran out of ink, I guess, right there.
I'll try not to read into that.
I know. And who else did I see?
Glenn is just joining us, so I think.
Glenn Secor.
Here.
Yep, and last.
Here.
Is there anybody I missed?
Mary Ann Sarafin has been attending.
Mary Ann Sarafin. Okay, thank you.
Okay. You all set Buffy? You all set?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, first item is just approval of the minutes from the meeting on July 1. Anyhow, how many comments or changes they'd like made? Going once, going twice. Can we have a vote to accept the minutes? To prove them, rather, to prove.
Okay, you're voting. Did, who, I'm sorry, who, who made the motion? And who seconded it?
I moved.
Okay, and who seconded?
Nobody. I'll do it.
Thank you, Glenn. Okay, here's the voting Claremont.
Aye.
Derek's aye Fleckner.
Aye.
Roach is not here. Secor.
Aye.
Teal.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Hazelton.
Aye.
Karpinski.
Aye.
Mahana.
Aye.
Roberts.
Aye.
Zegowitz.
Aye.
So it passed eleven. Zero zero.
Okay, Alicia, are you gonna do the OPM report?
All right, I give you the table.
Oh, thank you. So for the OPM report, first up I see is the design update. I did ask that, we did receive, word was transmitted that you all wanted to see a brief design update. I will share my screen. This was as prepared by the architects, so I will do my interpretation of an architect for you this evening. So find gold quickly to, you all received links to the DD drawings, by the way, and if anybody ever has any comments or questions, concerns, anything you have, don't understand the drawings, whatever, always feel free to contact me directly, happy to respond. But they had on their DD update, things about responding to the reintroduction of lawn on Main Street, the mulch path to the church parking, roof and canopy at the parking lot side, square rooms, square windows added, stair A adjusted to improve wayfinding in the high top area, so we'll step through these quickly. Didn't see them. The word was transmitted back to the design team by what the joint committee had requested that this area in here be reverted to traditional lawn to be more incompatible with what's going on on the common. There are some plantings along the edge of the building, but this area is lawn, again, as requested. The next piece was the path, there was, there is a highlighted here, this path that connects to the churchyard, there's a small sort of in, more informal sort of a mulch path connected here, and there's a pathway here that connects to the adjacent church lot, so. Yep, question? Okay, that was, there was a question about that, so we're just clarifying, the design team is clarifying about that. Next up was the, during some of the design, the, this is again, the elevation from the parking lot, looking back, there were the these as being, these end roof pieces here as being gabled to to match sort of the front, and also to highlight the entry to have this as a curved element here.
It's nice.
Yep. And along here also, there was a, in the design discussions, it was heard that to add these windows in here, just to sort of have an echo to what this is the existing building, and this is the addition, here's the line dividing them, and just to be a little, to echo more of the existing design here. Would be to add these windows along the line, and that's on both the east and west side. Okay? And then, inside the building, this stair has sort of a twist to it, and the idea was that when you come, coming down the stairway, that twist allows you to see, to actually see the steps. If you didn't, it would sort of be in line by twisting them out into the walkway, makes them visible, and therefore more welcoming, so there was, I was recognized that this looks a little odd in plan, but when you see it in three dimensions, it helps. And, I'm sorry, Jim, you had a question, and you had your hand up, and I didn't mean to blaze over you there.
No, that's okay. I was really just, it was about that clear story, what looked like clear story windows that were added to the side elevations to mimic the front windows. Looks like what, there's almost like a floor line or a ceiling line in there, what's that all about?
This line is, relates to, I'll say, the inhabited part back in here, there's no floor.
Right, thank you.
Yep. And then again, in here, there was a not quite, there, this is going to be the high top area where people can be we're not really using the word cafe, but if people want to sit, have coffee, chit chat, sort of be a little, you know, be able to have that opportunity here. So those had, this had been primary changes to the design in the last several weeks.
What was there before?
I don't think there was, there was anything, there was, at some point, there was a counter, built-in countertop there, and then it there was nothing, there was a countertop, and now there's movable furniture with the intent of being more flexible.
Thanks.
Sure. But for the most part, the floor plans have been preset for, you know, with small, small tweaks, I'll say. Jim?
Could you scroll back down so we can see the stair elevator area again?
Sure.
Is there anyone to zoom in on that?
Absolutely. I say ever so boldly, oh, gosh.
Me too.
Alright, sorry, dwink, 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 how's that?
Okay, yeah, great, so one of my concerns early on was exactly that, you know, we're gonna, how we would call attention to that. Somehow try and take the, the well, the terminus of that, that domain access into the building being the janitor room, do we, do we see what's going on down there yet?
What, what did happen, if I can oh, it's just off screen, but what ended up happening is the there's a, there's a blank wall at the end here.
Yeah, okay.
And so, the idea that that could be potentially an art moment.
Sure.
That could be there, or something, so when you come in, you don't see a door, there's a, right now, a blank wall, but could be.
Yes. Can you open up the, can you find the, the drawings, because I don't think, I think that you could still see the edge of the door through the opening, it's not a completely blank wall.
Okay, blend it up.
Just while you're looking for that, my, just my point, or my feelings only is, I like the stair, and I think the stair could actually even be pulled out three or four more risers to get closer to that opening, be a lot more prominent on that, that axis, I'm sure it'll get you up to the second floor a little early, but I'm sure that can be managed in the landings and whatnot. It's just, it's nice to have something there that creates a real moment, walking in that front door, you know, being so open and so axial, it really, I think helps.
I can pass that coming along, Jim. We want to make sure that we're not obviously interrupting with this opening, and by code, the handrail has to stick out a little bit past the one.
That'll be like, about twenty-three inches.
So we just have to make, so that might be why it didn't, but I can review that comment with the architects. And this is a filled-in doorway, just to be clear, this is, this was a doorway, it's now a filled-in doorway. So that way, in the door, you come in, there is a blank wall, there was a door there, it is now filled in.
Oh, okay, good. I didn't notice that, thanks.
Sure.
So what happens when somebody's just wandering along? Could you, could you just sort of walk us through them? I was just kind of curious, when you're just wandering along, and wow, look at this library, it's all redone, this is awesome, and you end up passing through there, what, where, where does that thing all dead end?
Okay, so if someone comes in and they've ignored the stairs and are coming down here, if they come down to the, either the, this room, just to zoom in to answer your question a little bit, they come into this office, would be, have a locked door, so they can't just go into somebody's office. Library things would be locked as well. The bathroom may or may not be locked, it probably have a occupancy, single user lock type thing on it.
And that's the staff bathroom, Alicia, so that would have a keypad.
Okay, keypad for the for this one. The mechanical room, this also would have a card swipe on it to keep people, the innocent out of the tell data mechanical and electrical room. This door to be the rear back door to the kids' room would have a, children's room would have a card swipe on it as well, so they can control who's coming in and out, and no one's sneaking in or sneaking out of this door. And if they really wanted to go up the stairs, you know, they're, I suppose they could go up the stairs. Or go out, they could come in through here and go out.
And the stairs are where, that's a, that's an egress stair, correct?
It is. But it's yes. How, if the, if those stairs have we started a conversation last week about if those stairs should have card swipes, because something will have to happen for after hours here. This is a gate line right here, it's amongst all the dotted lines, I realize it's hard to see, but oh, I can highlight it for you. Right here is a gate that would come down. So after hours, these doors would be, would be closed as well, and so people could come and go on an after hour event, and they could come in here and go out the door. They could have access to these toilet rooms, have access to the, the friend's door would be, would be locked. The meeting room storage, if they felt that was, you know, chairs, whatever they needed in here, little kitchenette. And then this door would, would need to lock, so people couldn't wander upstairs to really try to make sure that if it's an after hour event, and there's no one else in the building, that they can't, they don't have access to the whole building.
So I, I have a question, is there any reason that the main stair A couldn't be the second means of egress? If you put a door at the end of that hallway in that opening, you put a nice wooden door that's always closed, then the egress could be up the stairs?
This being first means egress, and this one being second, you mean?
Um.
Could this be a second means of egress, because the first my, my, my total recall on, there you go, no, I understand, I got it. It would have to, obviously, as you, you know, would have to be in a rated enclosure, the whole staircase.
Well, you're allowed one.
And then, one has to have direct egress out of the building, and the second one of two could have go down a rated corridor, but I don't, I think you're limited in that, I'm not sure if this would, they could look to do a rated enclosure around that, I think that might counteract that kind of the open, I mean, I'm sure can be handled with details about how that openness feels on all floors.
So I'm just, I'm just wondering, because I, I don't, I don't know libraries, but I do know schools and other public institutions, if you have a means of egress here, and it's on, it's on level, then I think that your main staircase of its, oh, it's not connect, it's connecting more than two floors, okay, if it was connecting just two floors.
It would still have to be in an enclosed rated enclosure, like these stairs are rated, you know, rated around the of CMU all the way for all three floors, for all, for the floors.
Do you need, if I just jump back in, I'm trying to I'm still sort of hung up on that little squirrely face down there, and it's, and it's just my, and I think it's really more of a planometric visual thing for me, but it just seems like, there's, it seems like some squirrely space past that case, the giant case opening that, that you go through there. That's why I'm asking, if we needed that, that somehow, like, why there's just like a lot of little corridor space running around through there, that seems like it could be sort of limited access more to the library personnel, if somehow we could orchestrate that.
It, it's back of house for library personnel.
Yeah.
We, we really don't want a door, you know, we're going to get ten to fourteen interlibrary loan crates a day, being delivered and taken out to that ILL receiving area, and to the maintenance area, we're going to have supplies and paper goods for the toilets and everything being delivered here, and then all of the book deliveries, and we spend more than a quarter million on books every year, are going to go down the corridor to the processing area, so this southern part of the building really works very hard in terms of library operations, and it's, this whole floor is doing a great deal for our library building program, you know, of behind the scenes work that we need to do in order to get books out on the shelves.
Yeah, I'm thinking more the, the space that's CR1C, the space that's connected to that, to the toilet area, to the things, supply stockroom, everything in that heavy pochete area beneath the the initial, I guess, the original library, right, it just seems sort of, there's a lot of sort of indefensible space back there that people can hide and sneak around, I don't know, it just seems like it, it could be more back of house than.
Maybe a door could be here, at this, at this area, that doesn't, here with library operations.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I just, you know, I can just it seems like, like in that little space, there's lots of nooks and crannies for things to happen that may not want to happen.
I, I can ask the design team to look at that.
We revised this recently. And right, so all of the things we're asking this space to do are, are making that a challenge, but we absolutely don't want you know, dead end and you know, unmonitorable corridors, so. Is that a, is that a key door going into the programming craft room? And is the idea to get, so librarians can get the materials in there? Yes, but patrons can't go through that, that's going to be keyed, and I think alarmed too, if, if my memory serves.
Okay.
Okay. But yes, we're, we're getting a lot of delivery in this area, and that's making it a challenge.
Buffy, you have to unmute, yep.
Can you tell me, I, I, I can't find where to get a pencil.
That's okay.
Why can't we put back a door coming off the stairs and across where somebody could sneak in? Why can't that be a locked door, and then staff has a lot of working room, and there's a lot of room for you know, all the custodial things that happen in the, in that front area?
I, I think the concern, there's so much traffic that comes in through here to the ILL and the library things that it was felt that it would interfere with operations, it would slow things down if there were a door here, but I do.
Can't a door be open? In other words, just have it accessible only for staff? Off, off that stair, you know?
Right here, that's what you're saying.
Yes, exactly, thank you.
I'll use a different color right here.
Yes, exactly, that's what I'm talking about. Why can't that be a door, and then everything beyond that door is staff only in a variety of ways?
I'll let Ellen respond to that.
Well, we, we can look at that, we, we were trying not to close that down, but
I know.
I maybe, I'll have Andrea from the Board of Library Commissioners look at it with us, because we, we want, we want it to be safe as well as workable, so we can look at it. Does it mean you have to give your book delivery people like a special code or key? It, it means we'd have to go out and open the door for them, two doors for them, actually, the door in the corridor and the door into the ILL delivery space. Yeah. You don't, you don't provide keys to them? No. Okay, no. We did.
Just seems to me that if you've got to open one door, you can open two, I don't, I don't really can't, I can't picture whether that uses a huge amount of time for somebody or not. So Ellen, I'll defer to you.
I think what we don't want is to put a door there and then have it be propped open all the time and in the way, because door right into tech services as well, so I think, I'll ask the building consultant to look at it and the architects, because we would have three doors right close to each other. And and that, that might be a a foot traffic problem.
All right.
We also have, and, and I know what you're saying about security, it's, you know, I think, as Ellen says, she's going to talk to Andrea, but so oftentimes, delivery, it's for the most part the same time in the morning, but you know, they break down, things happen, we pull staff, who are usually down there, so sometimes you know, someone rings the doorbell, they come in and they're going through the doors, once they're in the building, they're kind of going themselves to put the crates where they need to go, so sometimes we don't always have, you know, once they're let in the initial secured door, they don't always have an escort, if we know them.
Yeah, so. If you leave it open, does that mean kids can wander in there?
Yeah.
Um, yes, I would think so, but and maybe I'm wrong, Ellen, but the way I'm picturing is, it's, it's like there's the public space, and here's the staff space, and there's sort of a delineation even without the doors. But I mean, it's something we can certainly look at.
I don't, I don't know, I, I, I'm with Buffy, I leave it to you guys, to the library staff.
Tom?
I mean, this doesn't solve the security issues, but at a minimum, couldn't you just put some signage there too, just say, you know, employees only pass this point, or, you know, something to that effect? I can see the issue, we're, we're not wanting to, not wanting to close that off with, you know, with another door, but but yeah, this could be going back to Jim's original comments, this looks like some good areas for some kids that they could end up, it doesn't look like they can get in anywhere, if everything's going to be locked, but.
We'll, we'll look at it again, I think one of the one of the misleading things about even looking at the 3D sketches is, there are going to be so many things to engage the public before they ever get to this point, not that a determined teen or tween won't find a corridor that's not monitored, they absolutely will, so I'm taking what you're saying very seriously, but, you know, between the, the quilted artwork we have that costs thousands of dollars, and the wall-hung fountain, and the bulletin boards, you know, that are going to be full of public announcements at the high top tables, and all of the new books, and all of the book displays that we're going to have, this is going to end up being a very busy visual corridor, and, you know, literally, half of the people who come in are going to peel away into the children's room before they ever get to the stairs and the elevator, and another large number are going to go straight in the meeting room, so I, I really appreciate, you know, what you're saying about safety, and I'll get a couple more opinions, because you know, yes, you know, you don't want to create a space that can't be monitored and, and could be tempting. It's just that it's right next to the stairs. But, I don't know.
But it tells, if I, I'll just go back one thing, Tom, and then I'll take your comment, your question, if we just go back to this also, I'm just going to bring this up, if this is the view, you know, we want to, if this is the view, you looking down the hall, and this is obviously a rough sketch, computer.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's pretty obvious, you know, yeah, there's nothing there.
It's also what, we could put a door here that's attractive, but it is nice to have that blank wall, little, you know, little clutter, no signs, it's, you know, this is something to keep in consideration, that's all, and this is the elevator door, which isn't exactly right, but you get the idea. Anyway, Tom?
No, that's fine, no, I no, makes, that makes sense.
We'll go back, we'll go back and, and just take another pass at it and review it with, with Andrea, the building consultant from the MBLC. Anything else, anybody? I'm just gonna, okay, I'm gonna go look on what's next on my report. The project budget was included in there. You know, as of right now, not much is shaken, we're, you know, on our budget. But the what's more important is the schedule that's coming up, which, let me talk about that. So, what's going on now is we're reviewing, right now, the design development drawings are with the cost estimators, they're each working individually. They're going to exchange homework in a couple weeks, and then we'll have a reconciliation meeting to, to compare, you know, to make sure that they go through line by line, and, you know, make sure that the scope is covered, and, you know, they, and nobody missed something, and they just go through the whole thing. And the goal is not to have them necessarily agree on a number, but they will represent a range, the range should be, you know, pretty close, or someone missed something in the scope, right, it should they each have their, they, both of the estimators approach it in different ways, and of how they estimate it, so it's, and use different, a lot of different sources, so the idea is that That uh, when next we meet, it will be September fifth, and that's a Wednesday. That's when, and I will in advance send you the information on the cost estimate, I'll send that to you and some items. Broken out saying about different costs on different things that we'll. In the event that, you know, to review, to to ensure that we're on budget. That we keep things on budget, so they, there may be options of, yeah.
It's it's the fourth.
Oh, the fourth, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's Wednesday, Wednesday's the more important thing, somehow the, I have the wrong, oh, you're right, sorry, joint committee on the fourth. Um, sorry, Wednesday, and then. We'll have a list of things to talk about what might be, what could, should, or, you know, could possibly be fit into the project and what might. Come out to, you know, to balance it out. Those are gonna be all talking points, I'll have those all listed out for you with different information. You know, with lots of information on there to consider, so you can all think about it before we all meet again on Wednesday, the fourth. And then we can. You know, confirm. Budget. That, you know, the construction budget. And the project budget. Okay? That's gonna, that's gonna be a um. A good meeting. For everybody to attend. So. One of the, yes.
We need to take a vote on that?
Nope, not yet, nope, that not until I send out the information, that's just sort of the schedule of what's coming up. Those are the sort of the big milestones that that's the important things that are coming up is that the estimate. Is going to be done, will be issued to everybody, and then we're gonna review that in context, you know, all the pieces of different. There might be options, we need to talk about V E options and things like that, there's different. Points we'll need to talk about in the scope of the whole project budget. Tom?
Um, Alicia, who's that, who's gonna be at the reconciliation meeting?
Me. It's so exciting. Uh, that my cost estimator and the architects and the architect's cost estimator. And. That's.
Okay.
Participate.
I I guess I was just wanna. Make sure um, it's not, it's not gonna be as with the working group. This will be a separate, just a separate like project team meeting.
Yes, it's. Yes, it's, it's, yes. We may have to, uh, yes, that's what the plan is. Um, okay. Okay. So I'm gonna go back to. Back here to uh, on here, the U E C proposal, I had sent that out, U E C is, oh, sorry, Beth, did you have a question? Beth? You have your hand up and you're muted?
Sorry about that, um, I just wanted a clarification on. The budget reconciliation and that meeting that we were talking about on September fourth. Are you saying that um? Will the trustees be there, the permanent town building committee, as well as, I mean, will it essentially be this group?
This will be, it's gonna be joint committee, which is permanent town building committee. Um, and the library trustees and the folks from the working group, so we can all go through the once and all together.
I thought you had said it would not be the working group, sorry.
Nope, uh, no, the they will, the working group is not going to, is is not the intent that they attend the actual reconciliation. The act of reconciling going line by line. That is not a working group activity.
So Alicia, just to clarify, the September fourth meeting.
Yes.
Is when we would go through the general cost estimations with this group and the joint, uh, the joint group and the working committee. I think what I'd like you to explain to this group is they probably don't know what a reconciliation meeting is, the line by line meeting, so if you could be clear. With this group of what what that actually means, how detailed it is, it takes hours and hours, um, if you could just be a little bit more clear about what that means for this group, that would be great.
Okay, I'm sorry. So uh, reconciliation, there'll be two, there are two cost estimates done, one done by C H A's estimator, uh, estimating team. And one is by the architect's estimator, so the two are. Independently doing their homework right now, performing their estimates. The day before we meet, they sort of swap estimates, so they see what other is and they come to the meeting prepared. We go through each section on literally the line by line on each estimate going through, we'll. And they'll start at the, I, you know. Start at the beginning, but let's just make it up that we'll start with concrete. How many yards did you have on the foundations, okay, nope, I had, well, that's odd, I had, you know, five hundred, why do you only have a hundred and twenty-five? Oh, you know what, they'll talk through it and go, you're right, I missed that, I carried that somewhere else, or I missed that, and. Just to make sure, and they'll go through the bigger pieces, they'll go through every line to make sure that both parties carried. Included all the pieces in the, in the estimate, the architects are listening, who obviously know every line that's on there, saying, did you guys include this, did you forget that? To make sure that it's all included. And we'll go through each section, each line, to make sure that they've covered everything. But like I said, it's not meant to be that they agree on the price. Because they each will approach things, like one estimator will say for a wall, it's made up of a stud. They carry a stud price and two pieces of drywall, there's, and so they'll price it out with studs per square feet and, you know. Eighty square feet of drywall, that's one estimator's approach. Another estimator's approach would be to review that as an assembly. As, you know, the the stud wall insulation, all that assembly has a cost, an assembled cost, that's a. Slightly different way to do that, if that makes sense to you, rather than how the do the pieces, they they price it as an assembly or something like that, that's just an example of how they might price things. Slightly have a different approach to how they do things. But I should, we get further down into more detailed drawings. And there's more information, the the more. Accurate. The estimate is going to be and less um, contingency built up within the estimate itself. Does that make sense to everyone?
Yeah, thank you, I just wanted to clarify that the meeting where actual decisions are made as to whether or not we can actually fit in a power, you know, a power generator or. Solar panels or whatever, that meeting would be the meeting of September fourth.
Correct, and you all will have.
And we will all be there, okay.
You will already have received the. Vetted for reconciled estimate already in hand.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Anyone else? So uh, one of the proposals I believe is in your packet came from U E C, it's. Universal Environmental, something or other, it's a. This is the company that way back in twenty. Fourteen, I think, did the initial. Uh, they do hazardous material. Testing and uh, remove, abatement, they don't actually do the removal. Uh, they oversee the removal, so. They did the original test where they came around and took little samples here and there all over the library and came up with a report that said. Where there are um, hazardous materials that would need to be removed. And. So I went back to them and said, okay, based on this proposal, you know, this report you wrote. What would, they have to write specification sections that would, that would be included in the bid documents and then. During construction, they would help with the bidding as well if any bidding questions came up. And then they, during construction, they don't actually, the contractor would need to hire. Specific companies. For to do the. Removal, which is usually under very specific. Law defined. Conditions, tinted, whatever, whatever those are, they're different for every material. This company also needs to be there to supervise and to ensure that it's being. Removed in a safe and appropriate and legal way and then. Then now being dis- transported and disposed in a safe and legal. Manner, and they keep track of all the paperwork and all the, all the things, so. The proposal they gave, they submitted was for all of that, for the spec sections, answer any bidding questions. And for the construction. Portion. So I had sent that along. And I don't remember what their. Looking at the wrong thing. Um, they had sent a proposal in for, I forgot for how much.
Sixteen thousand four, um, fourteen thousand six sixty.
Thank you.
And that has a favorable impact on the budget, correct?
It does. It does have a favorable impact. So it was less than what um, I had estimated in the budget for that. So that's good news. There's one in the right direction for everybody. So that was one thing, yes.
This is where we need to have a a vote, I I think Buffy might have thought that the vote went with the line item above.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
The group does need to vote to accept that proposal and send it to Kristen for a signature. And um. And. Was it? What was the original budget number, Alicia?
I'm scrolling down to find that right now. It was um. I can't find it. I'm looking for the proposal.
It was.
On the bu- on the budget, I will share my screen. Or I can just tell you. On the um. Budget originally for hazmat testing specifications. And um, monitoring those two pieces together, I had uh, forty thousand dollars.
That was before? Or that was it?
That was what I held on the budget. And. Um, but it came in, it, I think, the the estimate the proposal gave us was for fourteen. And I, this is work I would have. Put under the general, I'm recommending to have under the general contractor's scope of work. So he has to coordinate when the bateman has to happen and if during, later on, he comes across some piece that additionally needs to be removed or his. The phasing and things like that is his responsibility and. We don't want to be seen as holding him up because we have not. I couldn't read minds and know that that guy, that the person needed to be there that day, the contractor would be responsible for coordinating. Um, all the removal. I see Tom's hand, Tom's hand up.
Um, so just a question, uh, sorry, I'm on my phone here because of my problems with my computers, so I haven't been able to see anything. Um, uh, the, so is this uh, proposal with U A S, U E C, are they gonna be a sub to you, Feingold, or is this a direct? Hire by the town?
It is a direct hire by the town, as you had the keeping with that, initially from twenty fourteen, they were a direct hire by the town.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, can I have a motion to approve the U E C proposal and budget implications?
I'll move that and I'll add the word of forty thousand dollars.
Okay. Well, I think it's thirty.
Yeah, that's what I didn't know, the, I still am not clear on the amount.
Oh.
The amount, sorry, the. I don't know why I can't. U E C, sorry, here we go, sorry, I apologize. The amount came to fourteen thousand six hundred and sixty dollars, so I think if we can. Approve the proposal from U E C for a total of. Fourteen thousand six hundred and sixty dollars.
Oh, that's pretty different from forty thousand, okay. But I will make that motion.
Okay, every second. Second. It's Mary Ann.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Here's our voting. Claremont?
Aye.
Dirks, aye, Fleckner?
Aye.
Roach is not here, C four?
Aye.
Teal?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Isleton?
Aye.
Karpinski?
Aye.
Mahana?
Aye.
Roberts? She is she? Oh, okay. Zegowitz?
Aye.
So it passed eleven zero zero?
Excellent. I'm just going to ask for one second that we amend the vote, I'm sorry, but I'm, I'm adding this together on a calculator. So Alicia, I think task one, the eighteen hundred dollars isn't carried in the. I should maybe be sharing my screen here, isn't shared in the number below. So the actual total is sixteen thousand four hundred and sixty dollars.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just double checking the math and I'm sorry, I'm only doing it in lifetime.
Hope that makes sense.
So task one and task two together come to. Sixteen thousand four hundred and sixty dollars, so if, if someone would. Take the amendment to their motion, that's the amount that we want to be approving.
So how do we do this, Ellen, do I make the amendment and start over?
Yeah, I think we just start over for the to, I'm, I'm with Ellen, just double checking. Her math. Cause I bet she's right, cause. The way it's written is, I agree, ooh, you're. Yep, he did too, the, so the total to approve the U E C proposal for a total of sixteen thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. Jim, do you have a question?
Yeah, so it's more of a procedural thing, just when it gets to the, to the time of the general contracting. This uh, this uh, vendor. Goes under the general contract?
No, this vendor who's providing the specification sections. And is going to be answering big questions and then supervising essentially the removal.
Okay, okay, supervising, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I was under the understanding that they had to take it up.
As you might imagine. The removal, uh, the disposal of these kinds of materials may not have always been handled legally.
But, yes, yes, for some reason I thought that they had responsibility for removing it also, and then. I was gonna be curious how they, we'd be able to sneak that under the con, of the general contractors.
This is, this is.
Okay, I'm good, thank you.
Supervision, if you will.
Right to that, thanks.
Yep. For the, so um, to accept the U E C proposal for a total of sixteen thousand four hundred and sixty dollars.
Okay, I'm gonna scrap the previous motion and.
I think that's the way to go.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the U E C proposal of sixteen thousand four hundred and sixty dollars as presented. I just need it seconded.
Second, second.
Okay, Mary Ann, so here's the voting, Claremont?
Aye.
Dirks, aye, Fleckner?
Hi.
Roach? Oh, sorry, she's not here, C four?
Aye.
Teal?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Isleton?
Aye.
Karpinski?
Aye.
Mahana?
Aye.
Roberts?
Aye.
Zegowitz?
Aye.
So it passed eleven zero zero?
Thank you. Uh, the next thing on here is the report on internal town review with a specific point to the. Water waste and treatment plant issue.
Maybe I could just report on that, Alicia?
Absolutely.
On on Thursday at two o'clock, um, we'll be meeting with Mark Moore and Kyle Fox. Um, Kristen and myself for an update on uh. The discussion that they've been having with the D E P about this, so it's it's premature for us to share anything except that. Um, the town has had an ongoing issue with inflow and infiltration during heavy rainfall and um. We are looking to get guidance from the D E P and we'll have more to report when we meet next.
Okay, the next item, Ellen, is the library director's report, so you're still on deck. And your um, R F P.
I will, I will just share that the R F P for a temporary offsite location went out and um. Proposals are due back, responses are due back on uh, Tuesday, September third at eleven A M. Um, we're looking forward to that. Um, and uh, you know, once we know what our offsite location is, I'll start to work on the R F Ps for. Um, book and shelf moving and furniture moving and of the historic. Of storage of some of the historic art items that we have in the library that we. You know, want to have in storage for the life of the construction, so all of that is in the future.
Okay. Um, you have here, uh, next on the agenda is the approval of warrants. And there's a of additional services, I might just rearrange that to, so we can talk about the um, additional service just to. Um, re-review that, the.
You, you wanna do that first?
I think so, because I just wanna make sure it's very clear what it is, because one of them is gonna be the approval of it and then the payment of it, so I wanna make sure everybody understands what it is before you agree to pay it.
Yeah, that makes sense, why don't you go ahead?
Okay, sorry, I think this came up.
We're on number, we're on number five, just to be clear, right?
Yes, okay, so um. So just as briefly, I think this came up at the last. So just as briefly, I think this came up at the last meeting, it was basically again, back in twenty fourteen, there was a geotechnical report that was written pertaining to geotechnical bores that were done at the time in the area under the building. The, um, the engineer is asking for two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars to update that report to for, um, to reflect current building code. That's the, that's what that additional service would be. That was it. I just wanted to be clear on that. There were questions at the last time about, um, there was a second part to that report about doing test pits that was, we, it was discussed, well, what would be the harm if we didn't do them? Are there any risks? And the engineers wrote back saying there are no, generally no risks, it would be nice to have, but they don't feel there are any risks, it would just, um, it would be good to have information that itself. It wouldn't, and doesn't impact the design significantly anyways, they don't believe.
So. Are, are you saying that the, they're saying that this isn't really necessary?
No, 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 last time, sorry, sorry, last time, when the geotechnical report was, um, additional service was presented last time, there were two parts. One was for this report update, which was approved. Uh, that was agreed to be approved. The second part was for the, um, for some test pits which were decided not to be done. There was a question of what are the risks of not doing them? And the engineers came back and said, there really aren't any risks not doing.
Okay. But Alicia, this is not an option, right? We must have brought up to code.
The report needs to be updated, yes.
Alright, so then, um. So, so we need, so I need a motion then to approve these additional services, correct?
Right, uh, update the geotechnical report for.
For, for the whole, what it says on that line. To update the report, then we'll approve the monetary. So this is just to approve, this is just to approve the services. Can I have a motion?
I, I have a question, Alicia, can I first? Thank you, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Twenty seven fifty, including the, um, permeability tests.
No, it does not include the permeability test.
I'm sorry, the two hundred and fifty dollars, but then on the next sheet, it says twenty five hundred to six thousand.
Right, so that it said the permit, the permeability, and I'll just pop it up here if I can do it quickly. I can share it so we can all see what you are referring to. To make sure that I also, that I'm talking about the same thing. So your question, the geotechnical services revive, the geo revise, the engineering report, two thousand, five hundred dollars.
Right, we skipped the thirty five.
Right, so we're not doing that, so the, uh, Finegold Alexander, the two, uh, they, they have a ten percent markup with their consultants. So it's two hundred and fifty, and that's how we get to the two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. So the sort of the bolded numbers and the not.
That's good. That's clear.
Okay, but when you go to the next sheet from them, the Geotechnical Services Inc., it says revised geotechnical engineering report, twenty five hundred dollars. Attend the meetings, blah blah. Total geotechnical service budget, twenty five hundred to six thousand.
Right, so if we go back up to the Finegold Alexander's cover sheet, it was, um, the the optional service, three thousand.
Is that including the three thousand?
That would include the three thousand, five hundred optional service, which would be a total of six thousand. We're not accepting that, we're only accepting part one, if you will.
So that will be no more than twenty seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So Alicia, where does the two hundred and fifty dollars go? Or?
That's just the two thousand, seven hundred and fifty is the additional, so this is an agreement with Finegold Alexander and the geotechnical engineer is their consultant. So it's the two thousand, seven hundred and fifty is an additional service to Finegold Alexander.
Oh, I see, okay, so twenty five hundred plus two fifty.
Yeah.
Okay.
So let's, um, any other questions? Otherwise, let's just do the vote on ex- on approving this work, the additional services.
I'll make a motion that we approve the invoice for twenty seven hundred and fifty dollars for additional services.
Actually. Uh, we're gonna vote on the money separately, correct?
It said that number four on the agenda is approval of warrants, so I, I think that's.
So this is, this vote is just to approve that we actually want this work done.
Yes.
Okay, so we don't, we don't have to put a dollar amount on this vote.
I'll make, I'll amend my motion to, um, just approve the additional services.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Um, was that you, Debbie?
Yes.
Thank you. So here we go with the, uh, voting, Claremont.
Aye.
Dirks, aye, Fleckner.
Aye.
Roach not here, C four.
Aye.
Teal.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Isleton.
Aye.
Karpinski.
Aye.
Mahana.
Aye.
Roberts.
Aye.
Zegowitz.
Yes.
Passed eleven zero zero.
Okay, now we can go to the actual money, the warrants.
Okay.
And if you want Lynn to read them all, then, um, you could just approve the entire warrant. I do wanna do that. Alright, uh, so the warrants include, um, to the architect for ninety percent completion of detailed design of one hundred and seventy four thousand and twenty dollars, um. And then to the architect for the amount of two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars for the geotechnical report update. To the architect of F A A for eight thousand, one hundred and forty dollars. Is, I don't know what this line item is, so does someone wanna explain that one?
This is for, um, uh, the site survey was added as an additional service to their scope of work. So this is on payment on a previous additional service for eight.
So they, they use land tech, but we are paying F A A, okay?
Correct.
Okay. And then, um, to C H A Solutions for O P M for the amount of for the time period of June twenty ninth to July twenty sixth, two thousand, twenty four, for six thousand dollars.
That's, okay.
Do we need to add that all up and vote on a total? Or can we just, having read those items, just vote?
The, the total on the warrant cover is one hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars. I think Tom has a question.
Sorry, sure.
Alright, again, you know, I apologize for not being able to see any of the documents, so this answer may be obvious, um, but has this additional geotech work already been done and that's why their invoice, it has, okay? Alright, thank you.
Can I just, um, before this gets worked as a motion? I feel uncomfortable that we approved, um, extra services before we in part five, before part four, where we're paying them, so can I bump everything down to five and make five up to four and four down to five, Ellen?
I think we I think given it's posted this way, we took it out of order. I think we took them in the correct order, Buffy.
Alright.
And I can, I can share a screen if.
No, you don't need to, I have it, but I just felt uncomfortable that we jumped down and approved work done before and then went back and paid for it. So, that's just me, I like things in order.
No, we actually approved the work to be done.
Right.
Not that the work. And therefore, we had to approve it first before we approved.
That's why I'd like to switch them, four and five to be switched.
Even though it was already done.
Well, yeah, so it sounds like they essentially did the work at their own risk, that they were gonna get paid for it.
Right.
Okay.
So are we approving it as a sum of a hundred and ninety nine, ten? I'll make that motion if we are, I'll make a motion that we approve this warrant in the amount of a hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars. Warrant number six, ten, is that what it is?
Nine, ten, I thought it was.
Nine. I second it.
Okay, here's our voting then. Claremont.
Aye.
Dirks, aye, Fleckner.
Aye.
Roach is not here, C four.
Aye.
Teal.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Isleton.
Aye.
Karpinski.
Aye.
Mahana.
Aye.
Roberts.
Aye.
Zegowitz.
Yes.
Eleven zero zero.
Jim, Jim, I keep thinking that you're saying, yeah. Like, like the Russian version of no. Yeah.
So is that a no?
No.
I, I was taking it as a yes, but then you really confused me.
Go back to the eye.
Okay. Um, there's nothing under old business, under new business, um, we have the Amplifun monthly report for June to approve.
Yeah, so this is still a vanilla report to the state, and if you'll just approve it, then we can move to the more important new business.
Can I have a motion to approve the Amplifun for June? So moved.
Second.
Is that you, Glenn?
Yep.
Thank you. Claremont.
Aye.
Dirks, aye, Fleckner.
Aye.
Roach not here, C four.
Aye.
Teal.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Isleton.
Aye.
Karpinski.
Aye.
Mahana.
Aye.
Roberts.
Aye.
Zegowitz.
Aye.
Eleven zero zero.
Oh, Buffy, to your point, up to your point about item four and five. We did, we did them in the order that you wanted, it's just that we reordered. Because, but the agenda, we're not changing the agenda, you know, I don't know how you're gonna do that in the minutes, but.
It's not on, it's, never mind, never mind.
Okay.
We'll coordinate, Buffy, we'll make it work, we'll talk about.
Okay. Um, okay. I assume, um, item B, appro- approval process to go to bid. Um, there's, there's a lot to say.
Yep, I just, I just wanted to talk through this, so I, I, I understand. So, on September fourth, I'm hoping that the, you know, this committee with the working group gives the design team permission to proceed into construction documents. And then somewhere about mid-October, we're slated to have a mid-C D construction document phase estimate refresh to make sure that we're still tracking, uh, where we should be tracking. And that takes, you know, but, but that will be, they'll be, that will sort of be done in stream. They'll continue to work while that estimate is reconciled and reworked. Uh, you know, and, and reviewed, but they'll continue to draw, unlike right now for D D, they're kind of on hold. But they're gonna keep going through CDs, uh, with the intent of going out to bid mid-January, about January fifteenth is right now the plan. What does this committee need to do? What is the, to be able to say, okay, we're all ready to go to bid? Does this committee need to sign off? I mean, I, after reviewing the mid-C D estimate to confirm that we are on track. What else does this committee need to do before we go to bid? Anything do they to sort of approve, to give the thumbs up? I just wanna make sure it's reflected on the schedule and I'm allowing the appropriate time and set up the appropriate meetings for, before we let them go out to bid. Tom, are you still on? He is, Tom and Hannah.
Yes, I'm still there.
Wha- what process do you use in Permanent Town Building Committee? I'm familiar with several other processes, but I don't wanna overrule what has traditionally occurred.
Well, you're not gonna overrule us, it's not an issue, but, um.
I used the wrong terminology, recommend differently.
Um, you know, in the past, it's basically been doing very similar to what we're doing here, it's, you know, once we get through you know, the, uh, you know, I think it would be good to have, um, you know, once we're somewhat complete with the construction documents, to have another, uh, do we, we don't have another cost estimate planned, do we?
We do, mid-C D is about, you know, sixty percent C Ds. There will be another estimate, it's scheduled for to be, you know, returned just before the holidays. Uh, the Thanksgiving holiday about, uh, right now, I have it penciled, then is November thirteenth. And the working group, you know, to be able to review that. Um, and then the joint would be presented to the joint committee the first Monday of December, which would be, um, December second.
Okay, so obviously, consider, right, so, you know, assuming that we get a, you know, again, a favorable
Yeah.
Um, favorable estimate, uh, you know, returned and, uh, we're satisfied with the progress of the, uh, you know, of the design typically, you know, we basically you know, provide the, you know, the team, the authorization to go ahead, you know, and advertise, you know, advertise the project for, for bid, so. Um, anybody else from P T V C wanna weigh in on that?
No, I think you did it. So we'd have like a joint, we'd have a joint meeting to vote on that, is that how it would happen? Okay.
I, I think considering, yeah, yeah, the, the way, the way this part, you know, this project, um, has been managed, yeah, I think that would be appropriate.
Okay.
Alright, so we'll have a check, a check-in of the mid-C D estimate and then maybe a, you know, if it you know, sort of final presentation of the CDs, if anything, from the design team at the end. Just as a sort of summary, before we go out perhaps. Like in January.
Just as long as it's not on Christmas Eve.
I, I agree. Uh, but they would, they're hoping to go to bid, uh, January fifteenth, so I might say whatever the you know, ten days before that, something like that, that, or somewhere around the bid release date that they do sort of a final presentation to you all. Before it goes to bid, so that's unreasonable. Um, Beth?
Yeah, yeah, probably, you know, maybe, yeah, you know, we can obviously, you know, adjust accordingly as we get closer, but maybe something right after, right after New Year's.
Okay.
Meeting right after the New Year's.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I guess I just, I know I brought up at the last meeting the fact that when the construction documents went out from, uh, E M S, the Jones Library and, um, companies looked at the construction documents, there were many, many requests for additional information and clarifications and took a lot longer than was scheduled, and there may have been many reasons for that, that are unique to E M S and don't apply to us, but I'm wondering if there's any kind of review that can be done of the construction documents and the bid paperwork to make sure that they are as complete as possible. I'm not sure you people are more knowledgeable about these things that than I am, I don't know if Kristen, you would have any ideas on that, but, um, if there's, uh, what I'm trying to do is to anticipate and correct for any of the issues that happened with the Jones Library in E M S.
Um, I know specifically in one instance, some of that information was about the like camera locations and where the low voltage wiring that did not get included in the documents, they made the decisions to still go to bid. If I knew that stuff was missing, I would, might recommend that we, that it had not gone to bid, but that aside, I, I would not allow this to go to bid if I thought such a, a big chunk of the bid was missing, because if you issue too many addendum. Uh, general contractors don't, you know, they kinda get they see it as, um, unfavorable. And will, any confusion, uh, just confuses thing. But, uh, nope, we're already a- ahead of those two specific items on this project already, so. But no, I agree that if, that was felt that there are missing pieces, there's nothing magical about the fifteenth, we all want to get out to bid, so we, you know, the sooner we capture better, you know, hopefully the sooner we go out, the better the pricing, but there's no, nothing magical particularly about that date, and I wouldn't. the sooner we go out, the better the pricing, but there's no, nothing magical particularly about that date, and I wouldn't do it to, at a, to push that date absolutely, if I felt there were critical pieces missing. But, as far as I can tell, you know.
Here tonight, who, who weren't on the meeting when Feingold Alexander was explaining that so many of the consultants and subs, um, you know, didn't not have the specifications in the original bid documents and all of that, you know, had to follow up as addenda, so, um, you know, that is definitely something we want to avoid, and, and I, I also, uh, in speaking with the building consultant, Beth, and I'll, I'll just rush through this, but, um, in the case of Wuburn, uh, their city, um, solicitor told them that, you know, they would not be eligible for the historic tax credits, and typically that's for commercial, um, venues that are in historic properties, and she, um, was told that, you know, even as a corporate library, they would not be eligible for that. So that's something that we would never have been eligible for, although I really appreciated you sending me the update on that, so. Um, so there, there are many things happening in, in, at the Jones Library, I think, in Amherst that you know, don't pertain to us because of different governance, and also, you know, different history with the project.
And I think Beth, I would just add, you know, we need to entrust Alicia as our owner's project manager to apprise us of any things that may be missing or need, uh, advancement to hold off on the process. Um, I think we build a really great relationship with Alicia over the course of the project, so we continue to ask her questions and use her best judgment and question everybody the way, so we don't have a failed bid process moving forward.
And, and if I could just add one more thing too, I mean, I, I, it's inevitable, we're gonna get a lot of RFIs and potentially have to issue multiple, multiple addendum, and that's, you know, may not, may not be a reflection on, you know, the, the, uh, quality of the contract documents, it's just a reflection on, you know, the nature of the bidding process and the complexity of the, the project itself.
I'll second that, I think that's, uh, this is gonna be a pretty, pretty complex renovation project, structurally, um, technologically, everything that's going in and without the building, it's, it's gonna be a, that's a big one, there's going to be a lot of questions, and rightly so, and everybody wants to sharpen their pencils and get the right now, or the right answers, so.
Jean?
Um, and one of the things that Alicia mentioned at the meeting on last week, whenever that was, was that one of her jobs is to market the project to contractors, to get contractors interested and knowing what's going on and when it's happening, so. That'll be a plus.
Yeah, I'll reach out to contractors, I've had, that I myself and others in my firm have had positive experiences with, and we feel they would be a good fit for, and make sure they're aware of the bidding opportunity. There's others I'm gonna reach in their outlooks and erase it, so they can't see the opportunity, if I could. Um, okay, are there any questions? So I think the next thing on the agenda is also me, sorry, it was about the contractor prequalification process procedure, so because this project is over ten million dollars in, um, construction costs, we, we are therefore, as a project, required by law to pre-qualify our contractors. That's just, it's a fact. So, there are very, the state sets up very specific, um, got rules and how you do this. And the first thing is, that's on there, is you have to have a prequalification committee that is made up of three representatives from the, um, awarding authority, one of which is your OPM. And then there's also one representative from the design team, so what I'm looking for are two people who should be the two people that would also be on the prequalification committee. That would review all the, um, information, pre-qualifying subcontractors as well as general contractors. And I would also vote to do this electronically, not by, have them all submitted electronically, not have actual paper submissions. When I, when I pre-qualified, went through this at the Marlboro Library, we pre-qualified, uh, it could be measured in the beacon boxes of paper. It was probably a dozen, and I'm not kidding, of beacon boxes of paper, it's ridiculous amount of paper. So, I will, I would like to do that electronically, but that aside, who would be the two representatives from the awarding authority, and, uh, I am one, as required by the guidelines, who are the other two? I would, my, my opinion is I think one should be Ellen, but I'm not speaking for her. But that's, you all tell me who you think the two other people should be. Then I'll set up a series of meetings with the pre-qualification committee separately, we'll start that track. And the intended would be to start to post an award, you know, uh, um, announce the prequalification process, it is, takes time to go through these things. We wanna do it not too far ahead of the project, so that, you know, they pre-qualify and it falls off contractors' radars, but you wanna have it close enough, so you stay, you keep them interested, if you will, once they're pre-qualified. So I'm looking to at start the actual, say, Ali Al, that company, we'd like your prequalification papers probably beginning of October. Just to, to review the guideline, but the two people, please.
Yeah. Ellen, I would be interested in your point of view and who the two people should be. Well, I, I would really like to have someone from the Permanent Town Building Committee on it, I mean, I don't think it has to be only three. I think we should be sure that we have, you know, the best expertise on this committee as well. So, you know, I'm going to have an operational viewpoint, I've only, but, you know, been involved with one library building, so. Maybe, uh, maybe we could ask to have these names by September fourth, Alicia. At that meeting.
But what is, I mean, is it, it seems to me that would be useful if somebody went, who knows the contracting community, like, not that's a volunteer, Jean, but like, Jean.
I, that, I, Jean was who I was wondering about.
I, I, on one of my, my D-CAM project, I made sure it was additional services for me to do that, so. So it's like, not additional services for me to do it, um. I could do it, but I also wonder if Jeff Goodwin should also be in that mix, someone from Town Hall.
I'd be happy to be a part of that, if I could learn from you, Jean.
It's, um, yeah. It's a slight, it's, it's a, it's a thankless task.
Will you have forms that we can just fill in the, check, check, check the boxes?
Yes, and a lot of that is actually dictated from the, um, from the state, and the committee also needs to come up with what are, what the, some of the criteria is. But if the, all the guidelines are set up, I'm happy to share that paperwork with, um, whoever, but.
I have to say, I'm hard on them.
Uh, yep, it is, uh, yep, as you should be.
Okay.
But it is, uh, yep, it's, it is tough, cause if you to technically not qualify somebody, which is our right to do, it has to be very founded, it can't be capricious, right, it has to have facts behind it. So.
Yeah, I, I agree, Alicia, I mean, I, I've been through the process several times, and I have, I have another one coming up very soon too, so I would certainly agree with you to, to do it electronically. Uh, you know, the criteria is important, I, I like the idea, I think definitely we, you know, we should have one member of the PTBC, and I'd support Jean, and I, um, I agree also that, you know, Jeff, Jeff might make sense also, to be, to be involved. But, you know, I've, we have also had, you know, on my, in my work, on my work life, we've had situations where it, you know, it is difficult to, um, to disqualify somebody, and we've, you know, and we've had, you know, in a few cases, we've had the, you know, the contractors actually come back and challenge it, so, you know, I, I do agree that it's, if, you know, if you're considering to disqualify somebody, that you have, it has to be very factual, and it's not easy to do. Because if they have the D-CAM, they have the D-CAM, um, you know, certifications for their respective disciplines, it's, it's very difficult to disqualify somebody.
So, um, Alicia, you were saying that this would start in early October, so what would be the span of commitment for anyone who's on this committee?
So the tasks would be that we have to be able to send it out, to send out an RFQ to the, to put out into central register saying, we're looking for people to pre-qualify, and here's the RFQ form to, to ask for these qualifications, this where, this is where the committee can fine tune and fuss that a little bit, to try and, you know, narrow the, the expertise a little bit on, as best we can, on, you know, trying to set standards for a contractor, there are still guidelines and limits on what you can do on that. But to try and customize the RFQ form, so that's one thing that the committee would need to do before. And then you can assign points to different categories on there, but again, it's, you have some wiggle room, but it's within our customization, it is, uh, you know, there are, you decide points and things like that, this is something that the group has to do.
So, one month, six weeks, do, is this?
So once it gets.
Thirty days?
Sorry.
You know, what's the time commitment?
Sorry, if the, I, I misunderstood the, which time commitment, for the committee to come up with the RFQ, that's probably a couple brief meetings. But once we put it out in October, it's usually, you know, you wanna be able to give them time to respond, three, four weeks maybe, to be able to submit back the proposals, and then it's a couple meet, then it takes time to sort of pre-filter the information that's come in, and then for the committee to review, my office would sort of sift through all this, everybody would have a chance to review all the information, but my office would sit through and provide a summary of all of the information that has come in, um, to sort of, uh, narrow the committee's time down, then, then it's a couple hours for the committee to review all the criteria and all the points, how well did they respond to, to, um, award the points to each subcontractor and contractor based on the RFQ that was given, that was sent out. Right, how about, how we assign the points to how well they responded?
So mid-September to have a couple of setup meetings through mid-November?
Um. Yeah, something like that, so the, set up a couple meetings to set up the RFQ sometime in September, goes out to bid at the beginning of October, you don't have to do anything until they come back and for probably, you know, let's say a month, and then we meet again, and probably, you know, a week or so, somewhere in there is a couple hour meeting, when they come back, and people would wanna review the, the stuff before the meeting, and then the meeting sometime mid-November, so yes. And we just have.
But I think you should also make it clear too, if people, you know, expectations here, that we could receive, you know, upwards of a hundred, if not more, smittles.
Yes.
Is that typical?
Yeah, yes, the more, the merrier, honestly. The more, the more that pre-qualify, because the way that. Each trade, each trade has a qualification, so it's electrical, mechanical, civil, you know, there's all the different trades. Plumbing, all those, and so the more people that pre-qualify, cause when it, the first thing that comes through, they, the bids that come through, um, this, I did not come up with the system, the filed sub-bidders have to submit their bids first. And the filed sub-bid trade categories are determined by the state, there's something like, I'm gonna say fourteen or sixteen categories of HVAC, plumbing, electrical, elevator, um, carpeting, ba, 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 painting, different categories like that. Only already qualified filed sub-bidders can submit bids. And from the, and of all the bids, if there's, I, you know, this many um, subcontractors on a project, more or less half are the filed sub-bid categories, so when the general contractor comes time to pull his price together, about how he's gonna do, when it comes time to pick an electrician, he must select from the list of pre-qualified electricians who have submitted bids, and this is all public information, but he must pick from the pre-qualified electric, electricians that have been, who have submitted bids, so the more electricians that have been pre-qualified means potentially more electrical bids. Does that make sense? Sorry, Marion?
Yeah, hi, this is a quick question, does Westwood use Project Dog?
I, that's an excellent question, Project Dog or Bid Docs, I don't know, or either one, I don't know.
We actually did just use Project Dog on the Blanchard Roof project.
Okay. Is that your preferred, Jeff? I, it's either way, it's the same to me.
I actually liked the, uh, when we did it on Bid Docs for, um, the Cameron, Alicia, I kinda liked their format a little better than Project Dog, but either one works.
All right, well, we can, I can solicit proposals, see who's gonna. Um, yeah, there's a, a fee associated with posting them, but it's the electronically, it's very, it's very good, because it's very, uh, transparent, all the bids are there, everybody can look through them. Uh, when I had started, uh, you know, doing public work, that was, electronic was not an option, it was all paper. You had to go to Town Hall and announce it, and if anybody wanted to, uh, review, like, all the they all like to see what their competition is doing, so they'd like to look at the bids of what their competitors put in, which is completely fair and legal to do. It ends up being a burden for somebody in, in Town Hall to have to provide them those, like, paper copies, and so it's all online, no one gets bothered, it's all there. It's also very transparent, someone makes a typo or anything like that, it's their typo, it's all there, everybody can see it, no secret, you know, not a problem, so it's a.
So Alicia, maybe I could suggest, since we're also going to ask later on this agenda if anyone's interested in helping with furnishings and being on the furnishings committee, maybe they could let us know by, maybe they could email the two of us by September fourth. And I might just suggest, in the interest of time, since the trustees have yet to meet, um, the generator discussion could wait until the fourth, when we have the bids and know what we want to be discussing as alternates and, um, and items that stay in the, in, entire packet.
Right.
If everyone's amenable to not voting on those two things tonight, um, now that we know that there's another committee that you might just be championing at the bid to volunteer for. So, I'll, I'll email everyone a, a reminder to, um, you know, to, to just solicit, um, work on those two committees. And, uh, and then we can announce them at the September fourth. Joint, joint, joint meeting, Permanent Town Building Committee, Board of Trustees, and Library Working Group.
Tom?
Uh, yeah, so, you know, the Permanent Town Building Committee will be meeting on its own before then at some point, by the end of August, so we'll, we'll, you know, discuss as a committee, and, uh, with our recommendation of who will be our representative, representative on at least the pre-qual committee, if not also the furnishings.
That's good.
Sorry, Jean, it's gonna be you. Okay.
So Lynn, if, if everyone is amenable to, um, deferring everything under D for the future, um, they don't have to be discussed now, then, uh, maybe we can remind people of upcoming meetings.
Right.
I see Jean has a question, so, um, but there, there is a commissioning report committee tomorrow at five o'clock, and then the Library Working Group is August twenty-first, and then all three groups meet together on September fourth at six thirty, and I'll, um, mute myself, so Jean can.
Oh, I, uh, just about the commissioning committee tomorrow, um, I was just gonna ask the Permanent Town Building Committee, um, speci- maybe specifically Tom, if we, we are meeting to talk about building envelope commissioning, because it was not included very much, it had a very tiny bit of commissioning, um, in addition to their HVAC commissioning. So we're meeting, um, tomorrow, let's see, Beth, Alicia, Ellen, Jeff and I, I think that's the group, meeting tomorrow to talk about what added building envelope commissioning we want. Because we've been having troubles with some of our buildings, and. Because we've been having troubles with some of our buildings and the envelope. So if you have anything from any of the previous projects that you'd like us to consider, you might email us or Alicia or somebody.
That's fine.
Was that a question to me?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
It's. Uh, because we've been talking about some of the building envelopes around town that have been having troubles. With roof leaks and things, and so if there's anything from any of the previous projects. That you'd like us to include in the new scope that we're going to ask WSP to give us. That'd be helpful.
Okay, if I think of anything, I'll I'll share it with you.
Sure.
Alright. Okay. Um. I think that's it. I just need a motion to adjourn, unless there's anything else before we go?
I could, to to uh Lynn, before, before we go, can I just go back to the the generator issue again, um? If that discussion gets put off to. Next, next meeting, next month. I'm assuming that. Does, is, is that um, you know, because. At the same time, we'd be authoris- authorizing the. Architect to proceed with construction docs. Um, and is this gonna have an impact, like is this something that they're gonna be looking for an amendment on if we decide we, you know, we want to include the generator?
Yes, they will, they had already submitted a um. Additional services for design, I want to say in the neighborhood of twenty thousand dollars to add that to their scope of work. Um, there has been a lot of conversation around the generator. Um, and I think I would like to have that. Conversation as part of the whole context of the costs of the whole project of the, all the construction costs. When and budget when we meet at the next meeting, but I will put in the. Um, in additional information that the. Currently what is being held in the budget. Is. Is completely in accordance with code, which allows for the elevator to be. Battery backed up, so that in the event of emergency, the elevator drops to the lowest floor and the doors open. And I know that there are, um, the building inspector has concerns about this and may require the project to have. A generator. But like I said, this is a bigger conversation and I think we want to. Um.
Yeah.
Let's hold the conversation next time, but I want to just put that out there, um.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate, I believe that the building inspector has this under review related to the building code that the building will be built under. Um, and the code changes that may require the generator or not, so it's on my, you know. High priority list to get a better handle of this as it's such an immense cost. Um, if we do a full generator or even the partial, I think it was only a twenty thousand dollar difference between the partial and the full, so. Uh, I will be getting with the building inspector in the next few days as well, just to see where he's at related to his review in relation to the code that this project will fall under. And if there's anything that FAA can do to assist Alicia, because they should be up on this code as well, um, that would be a great assistance to our building inspector.
Yep, I will, I will double check that as well, but like I said, it's also a. Um. The requirement of the billing inspector is. You know, if um, obviously we must meet code, but uh that is absolutely not of debate. But if the billing inspector feels he wants to exceed code, that is. Maybe up for discussion and also then if you uh the, you all should elect to do the generator, then I will, I will also have those costs to present. To, again, to discuss as part of the, within the context of budget at our next meeting.
It it might also be helpful too, just to get an idea of like some of our similar projects, like, you know, we keep talking about, you know, the Amherst and the Shrewsbury Libraries. Grab, you know, it would also be helpful to, at least for me, to understand if some of these projects included. You know, included generators, you know, as part of their, as part of their up upgrades.
I did, I did pursue that, um, Tom, and so far, so um libraries have a. An all regions listserv, so every public library in the state, you know, receives this email when you send it out, so I did request. Um, that libraries get back in touch with me if they either had a generator or if they had a generator. Docking station so that they could have a portable drive-up generator. Um, and so far, I've only heard from um the Andover Library. Their most recent addition was actually a few years before our last edition, I'd say about eighty-six, but in two thousand and six, they had a full building generator. Put in and um Barbara tells me it's the size of two dumpsters and, you know, it does seamlessly turn on, you, you remember. You know, the gas explosions in Merrimack Valley a few years ago, so they definitely used the generator during that time. And uh, but I haven't heard back from another library yet, and I did. Ask the building consultant from the Board of Library Commissioners and typically, um. Libraries have not been built with generators, although libraries that have. The ability to go all solar uh often have a solar battery backup, so um. But it it depends on the use that the community wants to make of the new library facility, so I I hope to get more uh. You know, I sent this out on Friday, so it wasn't a very auspicious day to get very many. Answers back, so I hope within the next two weeks to hear from more library directors about their generators or their lack of generators.
Okay, yeah, that would be helpful, thank you, Ellen.
Anything else?
Just remind the trustees they have to stay on.
Oh, yes. Don't go anywhere. Um, can I have a motion to adjourn then? So move.
I'll second. Claremont?
Aye.
Bjergs, aye, Fleckner?
Aye.
Roach not here, City Core?
Aye.
Deal?
Aye.
Look?
Aye.
Isleton?
Aye.
Grupinski?
Aye.
Nahana?
Aye.
Roberts?
Aye.
Ziegowitz?
Aye.
Eleven zero zero, and we adjourned at eight oh eight.
Thanks, all. Thank you.